For what?
Okay.
For what?
Well, good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting, Thursday, September 10th, 2020, and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
There are no adjustments to the agenda tonight.
Okay. Any comments from the public tonight? What did you say, Lori? Okay, then let's move on to number three, and for our celebration of learning tonight, we're going to be introduced to new staff members.
Awesome, so the committee has voted already in our August meeting on our newest employees, and we had a very busy summer. We have our new employees here just to give you a few minutes on who they are, and they'll be easy on you, but be careful, they might ask crazy questions, so you guys should be ready for our school committee.
They probably don't recognize me.
Yeah, this is how you get into hazmat, so it's pretty shame. The last thing we do is, you've already seen their bios, I've, you know, you voted on them, we got them, yeah, they are, they're doing a great job. So I think I'll just start with Ally, and if you're in the back, you need to step up, that'd be great, Allison's right here, just maybe quick. Who are you, where did you come from, what do you think so far? And they may ask you a few questions, I have no idea, we'll see how it goes.
All right. Hi, I'm Allison Hobbs, I'm the fourth grade teacher here. I just graduated from the University of Farmington, and I just also moved to Soto. I really love this school so far, everyone's been so welcoming and so inviting, and I always love to see this every Tuesday.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Well, I think you have my grandson, so just be careful.
Is that a threat or what?
He's not the fourth grade already, is he?
Yes!
I wouldn't have said that if I were you.
Hi, guys, I'm Troy. We met earlier in the summer.
Yes.
I graduated from UNE with a bachelor's in elementary education, and I'm still currently working on my master's in special ed. So far this school year, just this first week, you know, we still have one more day, but it's been amazing, you know, just seeing these kids again, it's been, you know, just seeing their faces, you know, still behind their masks, but it's been awesome. You know, getting them back into the classroom and working with them, getting to know them every day.
You have trouble identifying these people? I mean, can you identify people when you walk in the store? I mean, do you know who you're looking at all the time? No, I've run into people I know, and I'd say, they take their mask, oh, there you, there you. I'm sure after a while you'll get the color of their hair.
And what did you teach, Troy?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade?
Yes.
Troy also taught summer school for us this summer, so it was a great way to get acclimated, use armor in some of the video footage that we have.
The big kid running on the field.
Let's move back to Mr. Trey Williams, maybe you can say hello back there.
Perfect, hi, I'm Mr. Williams, Troy. I'm the sixth to eighth social studies teacher, so I work with the middle school team. It's been, it's been great, I actually really like working in the team setting. It's nice, I come from, this is my first year of teaching in my own classroom, but I have a few years' experience as a long-term staff. And I also graduated from UMF, so this is my first year out. But it's really nice working with teams, I haven't done that before, like really sat down and worked, such a close group of adults, works really well. And thank you for having me, and it's been really nice, I like everybody so kind. And I love the hazmat thing. You should do it here, if you...
Excellent.
Good for you.
Miranda Mitten is down in our first grade class, we just finished the tour.
Yes, I can stand, I'm Miranda, I also graduated from UMF. I'm the first grade teacher, like you just said, and I love it, they're so cute and they're so sweet. And working here has been like so great, everyone is always willing to help and answer questions and just always so welcoming. I love it.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Annie Johnson, I teach music here. I'm from Illinois, I went to college in Illinois. I've been in Portland the last year, so I commute from there. But it is worth the drive, I'm having a great time. The music classroom is beautiful, the kids have been so lovely, the staff has been so welcoming. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
So what grades did you teach before?
Last year I was at St. Bridget Elementary School in Portland, and it was also pre-K through eight.
Oh.
Yeah, Annie's got some really good ideas, because in her area, unlike the rest of the classroom teachers here, they're classroom-based and they have all the same rules that we all live by, but then Ms. Johnson's class, because of music and singing and instruments, just has this whole other layer of regulations when we've met, and she's super creative on how we're still going to reach our PBL benchmarks while staying safe, so very fortunate to have her.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun, yeah, so, school committee, you know, we have five new staff on, that's a, for Acton, that's a, that's a turnover. That's your freshman class, right here.
Welcome to all of you, it's great to have you on board.
Yeah, they hit the ground running, they're gonna do great. Unless if you want to sit through some policy matters and some other things, feel free. Thank you for coming here this evening.
Yes, thank you for staying.
Have a safe journey home, okay, guys, thanks for being here tonight. Okay.
It's a pleasure meeting you guys. See you, honey.
Drive carefully through the window.
I want to do that more.
Yeah.
Okay. Great new group of staff.
They're new teachers, and they're new with the COVID, oh, gosh, they have so much to go through.
So much new, new.
Right.
In a way, you know, it's kind of cool to tell them how to, we can kind of mold them our way, and what a great way to mold somebody who's coming in with passion, compassion for the profession. And then the whole COVID thing for them, it's like they don't even know any different, just like our youngest students, is just what you do at school.
Right.
So it's really kind of neat.
All right, let's move on to number four, the consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Some moves.
Second, moved by Mary, seconded by Brenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Five and O. Okay, does anyone have any, let's see, let's do the superintendent's report next first.
You know what we'll do?
Do you have anything?
No, I'm gonna cover about everything I need to say in A2 reopening of school, so I'll hold my thoughts till then.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for any of the report, on any of the reports? Nope.
I'm all studied up.
All right, good. And let's move on to number six, which is progress monitoring, and for that, we will look to our new math coach, Patty Maris.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to say the group that just left has been amazing to work with. I work really closely with Troy and Ally, and they just, they're so positive. So what's happening with all these new teachers, I have to say, is it's gonna make my job this year incredibly easy. Between training them all in PLTW science and making the connection between that and what I wanted to do with them in the classroom, that whole mindset change will happen, I believe, more quickly than I even dreamed. So this summer, Lori and I started, we did some vertical alignment with the math curriculum. We looked for holes, we talked about where we thought things might need to be put in, and we'll use that in cohort meetings to generate some conversations about making sure our vertical alignment is correct and in the best interest of the kids. I've got a schedule in place, it's held up a little bit right now because of getting everybody ready this week, NWEA testing starting next week, but I can work with K-2 next week, because they won't be testing at the time that I have them scheduled. And I can also work around sixth, eights, NWEA testing schedule and actually do some tutorial time with some individual kids. So I can get in next week, I'm trying not to push too hard, but I'm pushing a little bit. And then the week after, I can get into everybody's classes and start working with modeling first, and then co-teaching, and then actually, once it becomes in place, I can actually start working with kids and small groups, and how do you question thoughtfully so that they're thinking and that they're willing to just jump into anything you give them for math. My third graders did such a wonderful job in remote learning in the springtime and did not hesitate to jump into a two-step problem. So, you know, that's, you know, we'll look at the NWEA information when it comes in, look for the 20th percentile, the 50th percentile, and kids that are in danger. But my intention is first to start with the teachers and then to work on to the kids. So I'm very excited, everyone has been very receptive, and we have a, I feel, a very good plan to make this a strong math year. You know, I welcome any of you to, you know, shoot me an email anytime if you have a question, if you think of anything, or, you know, or if you just noticed something that you think might be interesting to me that I could, you know, try in the classroom. Because it's all about real-life problem solving and, you know, jumping in and trust and not being afraid.
I, I'm excited just to have the vertical alignment.
Yes.
Finally being put in place, because that's something that has been, I think, that's been an issue for some of our scores and things, because the vertical alignment wasn't in place. So I think that's fantastic that we're getting that in place.
I mean, we had a vertical, a lot, a vertical math team, but it feels like it was a million years ago, and I believe, I'm embarrassed to say it, and we were using everyday math at the time. And so it really hasn't been looked at since then. Trackers need to be aligned, curriculum needs to be aligned, and I'm gonna push place value, place value, place value, place value.
And instruction needs to look different, and that's why Patty's the perfect person for this. She's, as far as staff goes, there's no question about her abilities and what she's done with the kids she's had, and from what I can tell, the people that are teaching math, both upstream and downstream of her third grade class, which is now fourth grade class, are wide open to it, so it's comprehensive. We've got a year to make a difference, so we're gonna give it a try.
All right, anybody else, anybody have any questions for Patty? Then let's move on to number seven, which is committee reports. Do we have anything from the long range?
Did not meet.
Okay. And policy committee, did not meet.
Not met, no.
Okay. Then let's go on to number eight, which is new business. And I'll just turn this over to number eight, looks like at least down to eight-six, which might be Andy, the rest of it looks like it's pretty much new.
Sure, I'll facilitate these, eight-one is me, and that I just want you to hear from Tracy Scully, our athletic director, and I am going to ask, when she's done, for somebody to make a motion to postpone fall sports, if that's your wish, after you hear what Tracy has to say, so that it's actually board action that postpones our season after you hear her, if that's the wish of the committee. And then to have a vote on that, if that's the wish of the committee when Tracy's done, okay? Thank you.
So I've been meeting all summer with the Southern Maine Middle School Athletic Directors, and we started out super positive at the beginning of the summer, and then we just had a meeting yesterday afternoon, and things are getting more and more bleak. The Maine Principals Association came up with some guidelines, if you follow the news, they came up with some guidelines, and then state officials didn't think those guidelines were in alignment with the whole COVID guidelines. So the MPA went back to the drawing table, and new guidelines are supposed to be posted today. You know, you're already into when the season's supposed to have started. We talked about not starting until September 21st as a league, just to try to get a few games in, but you're talking bus transportation issues, because you have to be three feet apart in the bus. Last year's soccer team was 33 kids, so that would, and if we have that again, you would need two buses. Oftentimes, it was hard to get one bus to go to a game. There's all kinds of different guidelines that you have to follow, you know, just the same ones that are in school, and then some, because of the equipment that's being used for kids. There's a lot of middle schools that have already opted out of the fall season. Keeping our fingers crossed that the winter season, something will happen and we'll be able to have the winter season, but I've been updating John after every athletic director meeting, and it just, it just doesn't look good. I have another one next week, but I don't think it's hopeful that there would be anybody that is gonna take it at this level. They're gonna try at the varsity level, I think, at the very least, but I don't even know if that's gonna happen at this point after yesterday's meeting.
It's gonna be super difficult to even have fans.
Yeah.
So even if we played and we traveled and we figured out how we socially distance on a competitive sport, your mom and dad get to go.
What about just intramural meeting, just right after school? Some kids could kick a ball around, I don't know.
And a lot of schools are going that route, they would want to go that route, but there's still the same guidelines in place.
Yeah, but you don't have the bus problem.
Right, you won't have the bus problem, but you still have the sanitation, you gotta train the people who are gonna be doing it to make sure the proper sanitation takes place. So I have thought about that, you know, if we get through September and things go well in the school, I would love to talk to John or talk to you about maybe the month of October, which is a beautiful time to be outside, offering some sort of intramural activities. And Mr. Martin said he'd be willing to help me with that, too. Depending on how things go here, I mean, I think we need to see how it goes for the month, and then I would love to be a part of that, because I'm sad that the kids aren't gonna have the athletics, because a lot of them depend on that, too, for their academics.
Now, financially, say basketball comes along in the winter, can we afford two buses to go out? Of course, there's less kids on the team.
Well, I think, how many, how many kids can get on a bus, right?
Well, it depends, see, the matrix is, if you're from the same family, you can be three to a seat. So if I had three players, or if, living in the same household, they don't have to be safe family, so I think you have to wait and see who's on your team and wait and see where you're going. Basketball does have way fewer students.
No, but I mean with the CARES Act money, do we have money for something like that? No, you had to use it by December, eh?
Right, I think we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Hopefully, we can have a winter season, and busing will be less of an issue because you have less athletes, just by the nature of the size of the team.
And...
It's probably much more doable, to be honest with you, yeah.
And busing is the biggest budget item, you know, when it comes down to each sport, too, but I think Kim and I kind of have that figured out. And honestly, I think if the winter season does happen, they're probably gonna do an abridged version of the winter season anyways, so we probably have less away games, less home games, because they were already talking about cutting the schedules down a little bit.
You know, 100% transparency, the conversation with Tracy, from my point of view, is let's get school right, let's figure out how to run a safe academic institution first, and put all of our energy into having our kids come back here, and then focus on some sort of after-school intramurals or recreation or whatever it might be, because we gotta get this, this is our core project, this is what we do. Let's get this down and not be distracted by anything else till we get this down right. Now, as we move into October, and I might be thinking about adding more kids into even the building, because things are going well, we can definitely look at options. I know that we also helped Jen Rue with the town, put out a kind of a voicemail volunteer to any parent who might be interested in being on the rec committee, not speaking for rec, but we're trying to help get the rec committee people to sign up to be on the rec committee in Acton, and then, of course, when that's more vibrant, there'll be more options, too, between rec and the Acton School Department. So I do think it is a work in progress, but I just don't see anything happening for middle school sports for Acton, and I do request that we take board action so that we have it in the minutes on that decision.
Also, no after-school activities?
There's nobody allowed in the building generally after four o'clock. We're not, PTG is still zooming in, even though we're back Monday night, their meeting's not in here at 7:30, it's via Zoom.
Right.
The only activity that's happening in public is this, the school committee is the only group that meets in the school.
What about the YMCA at the school?
Well, they are meeting, but it's not an after-school activity, and that was my decision, in that with a blue-white schedule and all that other things we've done, that, that helps parents, so allowing the YMCA here to have their after-school program following our safety guidelines seemed like the right thing to do for the parents that have kids here.
But the YMCA people are coming here?
Yeah, but it's a very limited amount of children, and there's one person from the Y that works here, and she was leaving as we were doing the tour, that was her leaving.
So my goal is to be able to have it back, obviously, because I know how much kids need it, but it just doesn't look like it's gonna happen right now. And I'll continue to go to meetings, our meetings are now at four o'clock, where we've been meeting once a week, actually, the last couple of weeks, so I have another one next week at four o'clock to make some final decisions, but...
Thank you for coming tonight and explaining.
Fortunately, I came with bad news, but hopefully it'll get better.
You've done a great job as our athletic director, Tracy, so thank you for keeping all of us informed.
And let me know if you have any other questions, and I do update John after every meeting, so be aware.
Thank you.
So then we are looking for a motion to postpone fall sports, fall athletics for the Acton School Department.
I can't go for that.
Well, I'll make the motion, with the, with the side note of, I hope that a way of doing it as an activity for the kids that are really into sports, you know, that's something to be figured out later on.
I'll second that, with the, we have to wait, see what the end result is, to begin with. I mean, I don't think we really have any choice. I suppose we could, but if something goes wrong, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble.
Everything takes a lot of steps to make it work.
Yeah, and like John said, the focus is school right now, so we really need to...
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Both? Four and one, okay.
Want me just to move to A2? I'll take the next one?
Yes, we did A2, yeah, reopening of school.
I just have a few things to say about reopening AES, but before I do that, Lori did a nice job pulling together about a four-minute video of just what the last three days have looked like, and you might want to position yourself so you can see the screen, it's, like I said, I think it's four minutes, 35 seconds. It'll give you a visual of how we're doing, and Mike, should we hit the lights? Okay. Photos.
So what are you gonna do for Friday assemblies? It made me think of it with the teachers all spaced out, are those not going to happen?
We're trying to be creative with how we might do it for each cohort on a Friday. First Friday is this Friday, we don't have anything planned, but we're spending time meeting together in cohorts to come up with different plans for different things, but clearly assemblies as we know it, which I think is so special for the school on Friday afternoons, we just can't pull that off even with half the kids.
Yeah.
We'll get back there, as I described it to kids in some of my remarks to reopen, I've, you know, it's interesting, because you deal with four-year-olds, you deal with 14-year-olds. And I described that a mask is our friend, because a mask is something that allows us to be with our friends, and we're gonna wear them until whenever, I don't know, until I'm told we don't need to wear them anymore, and then we won't. So there's no promises about how long, but I'm just trying to dish it out to the kids that this is just how we are now, and this allows us to come to school, so it's really a good thing. And they were very responsive, I think anybody in the building that's been working with the kids in the last three days will tell you, it's been overwhelmingly successful with them in regards to masks, you know, we were, we spent a lot of time being concerned about something that so far hasn't even really been an issue, you know? And there's a lot out there with schools opening in the media, I understand, and there's a lot of point of views right now, and a lot of people are fearful, and I'll tell you what, I like the word brave, I haven't heard the word brave lately. I think our staff and our students are brave, I like brave, because when times are tough, you need to be brave, and fear is real, and safety is important, brave is such a good word. And I really, I was thinking about this, I think brave's a great way to describe it down at Acton, our kids and our teachers, people are up for this, it says we got this at the end, we're doing everything by the rulebook, and you know what, we're not getting kicked back from the kids. They, I think some of them just think this is the way school's gonna be this year, and they all have their own little cute mask, and they're all very appropriate, and we haven't had to hand out many of these, really, and so we've seen all of our kids so far, which is great, because we had the white-scheduled kids in today, so we started with blue. So we opened with the blue schedule for Monday to Tuesday, Wednesday, and what we found then, too, with the drop-off is, there was a lot of parents dropping off that group of kids, so we put our resources out front to meet and greet and welcome them. They come in, they do their hands at the hand stations, and then the buses, on the blue days, it's pretty light, and they do the hand stations, and they come in, the doors open at quarter of eight, and the front door gets secured at eight, and we're there to let anybody comes in after eight, at that point, they buzz in. Breakfast is served in the classroom if they choose to have, but they go right to the classroom, we don't have that extra 15 minutes to watch the kids anymore, there's nowhere to put them. And then they go off and do their thing, on white days, it's just the opposite, the drop-off is rather light, and the buses are heavier, but all the buses are within compliance of a student per seat, unless if you're from the same household. And one of them is right down to like the last seat, last space, pretty much, so it's gonna be difficult if a new kid moves to town or something changes. But right now, we just made it with, I think it's bus C on the white days, it's really tight, but it's within compliance, because I looked at it, and I went and I met with the bus manager, I said, "Talk to me about how many kids are on this bus," and we actually mapped it all out, and we're good. But we have more bus kids on the second part of the week. And lunches are served for pre-K, excuse me, for K through two in the cafeteria, because we can do it. Lori worked at the cohorts with Patty and Chad and the middle school cohort to figure out where kids can be, clearly, the middle school kids are bigger, they take up more space, and there's just too many of them to put in there. We're a little bit over with the three through five, but we can put K through two in there, six feet apart, and they have their own seats, so they kind of have what looks like a regular lunch, but a little more spread out. The rest of the kids will come down, we have an order, they come in, they sanitize, they get their lunch tray, and they head back to class, and we have some ed-tech monitoring. Teachers can have their lunch, and of course, we do the three cohort lunches, a half hour, 25 minutes. And then, you know, our teaching and learning is very similar, except that we have masks and plexiglass, and the end of the day is just like the beginning, they exit, a little bit different, they exit from this end out this door, and they exit from the other end out the main door, because we're trying not to get too many kids together too close. That big curb side, for any of you that picked up the kids here, it used to be, you know, you just kind of have a section for about three, maybe four cars, and then you move up the next three or four cars. We have it lined with staff and kids, and if your car is along the curb anywhere from pre-K all the way over to the dirt, we put you in a car and off you go, because on a white day, 65, 70% of our kids are being driven, so there's a lot of cars. And that's worked out great, too. So I just wanted to tell you that the kind of the opening, and anybody else who would like to comment, this is an open committee meeting, I've been thrilled so far, we're at day three, day four is tomorrow, so we will have finished our first week, but...
So what would you say the percent is that are coming back inside versus staying home remote?
Okay, well, so you have 15 kids of multiple families, so it's not 15 families, but we have 15 students who are doing remote, some obviously brothers and sisters, so not the exact breakdown, I can dig it out, and then you have...
But it's mostly everyone came back.
Mostly everybody's coming back, then you have some people who moved, literally moved out of town. Then you have two groups that went homes, three groups that went homeschool, three families that would normally be enrolled, homeschool, that's different than enrolled or coming in, they're doing their own thing. Every one of them, when things change, will come back, I've spoken with all three of them. So we're good there, and then our pre-K program, which we had a waiting line for, and Shannon and Heather and I and Chad have talked about this a bunch of times, we changed the model so that it was morning and afternoon every day, and we're able to support a group of seven and eight or 15 overall, whereas before, we had double that. And we're thinking that, at first, I thought it was maybe the model didn't work for the parents, they're pre-K, they're four years old, they don't have to send them to school, it's not compulsory until you're five, kindergarten. We think, without surveying students, our guests, his parents are like, you know what, we'll keep them home for another year, we'll give them a pass on this whole thing, and they'll start in kindergarten next year, when things look way more normal, and we just won't send them this year. And that's why our numbers basically were down by about 50% in pre-K. But the kids still live here in Acton, they're just not choosing to send their kids to the public school right now, because they don't have to, and I think that's most of it. And if you noticed in the video, there was a couple of kids without masks, those are our pre-K kids. So pre-K rule is you don't, at four, you don't have to wear a mask, we're not forcing the four-year-olds to wear masks, teachers, all the same rules apply, children, not necessarily, and they're 100% separated from everybody else. They always are, anyway, so that wasn't really a reach, they always used to eat in their room, anyway, that wasn't a reach. Be honest with you, we've been working on this for a while, couldn't be prouder than the staff, they're very brave, and they organize, they've done a great job. That's why this school is open so smoothly, because every teacher and staff member across the board has been prepared for this.
All right, so, and volunteers, you're not allowed to have...
Not right now.
No volunteers, no parents in the school?
Well, unless you have an appointment, so, new registrations, you need an appointment with Amanda. Sharon's having IEPs virtually, sometimes we might need a parent to come in, so what we do, they sign in, we log them in, we can take a temperature, they get a mask, they sanitize, and we go to one place. We had to have a vendor come in today, because something broke. Same thing, Amanda, we use the temperature thing that we used this summer. Yeah, you're okay, we know who it was, we know where they are, we have their phone number and why they came in the building. Other than that, our group is the same group, two to three days a week, and the staff is consistent. But you're right, we're not, that's why we're not doing after-school things, why care? Parents don't come pick up their kids like they used to, why care? Walk them to the door, they take them out from the other side of the door. We're very, very strict right now, until we learn how to do this right.
No, I do want to compliment all our teachers and administrators, I'm so glad there didn't seem to be any fear of you guys being in our school, and you got Andy, who's really doing a good job with his guys, cleaning up, and I'm just very proud of my teachers.
Me, too, they did a nice job.
Great, great staff, great positive attitude. Great staff, great positive attitude. It was nice to see, even on opening day, it was nice to see the positivity and the enthusiasm that they had for getting back into the building with kids, getting kids back into the building. So if you did decide to do something like a Friday assembly, you'd have to do it twice a week, right? You'd have to do it with, but you got blues, and then you got white.
You'd have to do, it wouldn't just be Friday, it'd be assembly. It wouldn't be Friday assembly, would it?
It would have to be.
It could be Tuesday and Friday assembly.
Right.
That way, you always have the blue and you always have the white. Tuesday and Fridays are always static.
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah, we'll come up with something, and that's something we miss, you know? And it won't be like this forever. And my commitment to the community is as we get to learn how to do this, I can bring in more than half the kids. We can bring in half the kids and learn how to be safe, but then we can grow our student base in this building. We have the three to six feet to do it. And the place to start is with our youngest learners, because they need the most support. They're not independent, our youngest. And then in my opinion, and this will be a discussion that we have, probably the ones that are getting ready to go to high school, because they had not to another place. And if we find we have some seventh and eighth graders that aren't really getting it done on their hybrid day, trust me, they come back in on their regular days. They're gonna hear about it from their teachers. But they may be telling us, "I, no, Mr. Ross, I need to be in school five days a week just to get it done." Because for whatever reason, when I'm not here in front of my teachers, I'm not getting it done.
What about the sixth grade camping trip?
We're not doing the sixth grade. We're postponing that. There's no way. If I can't have sports and I can't have PTG in here, I can't take a camping trip. I can't get them all on the bus, even if I drive it, I can't do it. So that's up for grabs. We'll do something different for them. The seventh graders missed their rafting and ropes course trip this last spring, so I gotta figure out how to make that up for them. There's a lot of backlog in here, right? Like, try to have a wedding last April. When you having that? So you just get in line, and you know? That's the same thing with things at school that we scheduled. We're gonna have to figure out how to do it when we can. And that's okay. Camping in the spring is just as fun as in the fall. It's just actually a little colder and a little wetter.
More bugs.
More bugs, way more bugs. Way more bugs, yeah. Does anybody else have anything to add? I know I've talked a lot, just because I'm thrilled with the way school is opened. I couldn't really be more happy at how well everybody's done.
I think it's just been great teamwork. From our administrative team to the professional staff, the ed tech, everybody, I mean, the collaborative planning committee that we put together and we all, you know, kind of took our piece and ran with it, and it's taken input and effort from about every angle. And, you know, I'm very pleased to work with the administrative team and the staff. And it's just been very positive. You know, not knowing, and you know, there is that fear out there, and there is, you know, apprehension about, you know, bringing people together right now. And I just think that the all hands on deck approach has just been awesome, and the positive attitude has been really great. So it paid off, everybody working together and doing it fine, so. Very pleased to have kids back in the building and to see the wheels in motion again.
We all are.
The kids have been great. So the little one comes through the door, kindergarten yesterday morning. Puts her mask on. She comes to the door, she goes, "Oh, this mask and my glasses, I can't see." I was like, "Oh, me either." But she was so cute. So they're really good. And, you know, I think teachers are still figuring it out. You know, how do you meet the needs of the kids in front of you and the kids that are online? So they're still, you know, adjusting schedules and sending things out to parents. But I think it'll take a couple of weeks to get into a good routine of all that. But, you know, cohorts are really meeting and working hard to be as consistent as possible.
In a very ironic way, during our normal school opening, and here and anywhere I've ever worked, the first two weeks is usually a mess. The buses are way off, and the phones ringing, and it's just, you know, your first two weeks can be crazy. We didn't get one call on a bus this year. It was weird. It was just.
Yeah, power and auto, huh?
Yeah, yeah. It was interesting.
Well, I think what we have to realize that all goes back to why things are going so well. It all goes back to all the planning that went into it over the summer. It was amazing, the amount of planning and figuring things out and going by the CDC stuff and the state stuff and everything. I don't think we can begin to imagine if we were actually working in the middle of it, all the planning and coordination that went into making this first week such a good week. And if it hadn't been for, and I think that's why the staff is well on board, too, because things are in place. It isn't like, oh, what are we gonna do? But things are in place. They know what they need to do.
And you allowing us to calendar change for the PD for those six days last time we met made all the difference. Lori, in particular, got a ton of great feedback on how the PD was set up from veteran teachers alike. This was one of the best PDs we've had, because what we do is we were kind of rebuilding school. So we gave them a ton of time to make decisions that made sense for that age group of kids they were working with, and boy, did that pay off. You know, having those days and you allowing us to change the schedule was really what gave us the real, when the rubber hit the road. There wasn't a nanosecond of that time that we were together we wasted. And that was six days.
And I think also the constant notification to the parents or guardians, whatever, constantly giving them a heads up. It wasn't, you know what I mean? It was all the time. If they were paying attention, they would know. I think that must have helped.
Because things change. It was really hard to send out a communication not knowing that if the CDC or MDO, we would change something on you. So timing was really difficult. Sometimes you just had to hold your cards and wait for that right time to let somebody know, because you didn't know. But it's, so far, so good. We're gonna have our challenges, but I think we're well positioned to take on both challenges. And we'll be brave. That's what we'll do. We won't be careful. We will be brave.
And I think from the board, we say kudos, correct?
And I want to thank the school bus drivers that want to drive these kids.
Yeah, they're doing a good job.
You know, because just last night on the news, it was like Lewiston and Baker or something. They can't even get bus drivers. They don't want to risk it, I guess.
Yeah, a lot of unknowns.
Okay, let's move on to six, three.
Eight, three, distance learning and FERPA. This is gonna be real easy for you. I went to a, and I wanted to do it in a public meeting, so that we have it as the archive publicly. Went to a meeting with about 120 other people on Zoom on Friday in regards to, it was kind of like a Drummond and Woodsam seminar on live Zooming your classroom. And there was a lot of it that wasn't new learning for me. But the one thing to take away is we are fine to have live Zoom under our FERPA laws. There's some misnomers out there that this is against the law, and good to see in kids, and good to see this. No, it's not an academic record. When it's, when you secure Zoom link, it's a live class, it's not being recorded. There, you don't have any FERPA issues. We get into the weeds if we intentionally record it at our end for some reason. It then, depending, it could be a student record, for instance, maybe something happened in the classroom. I need to investigate. That becomes a piece of information I need to investigate because it's now been recorded. I can use that now. It could be part of a student record and, say, an expulsion or something. So you've got to be careful with how you use the information if you record it. So I brought the staff up to speed and said, "We're not recording this stuff anyway, and only the person who created the Zoom can record it." So do you have a reason to record your Zooms?" They're all like, "No." So I said, "Good, because it's been recommended that we don't, and that we're fine under FERPA." I just wanted to make sure, because we've invested in Zoom. Our hybrid learning is really based on the interaction of the computer when you're not in class. So I just wanted to get that update for the committee to know that I did attend that, and we're in good shape, and we're following what we need to follow.
All right, so just so I understand, when a teacher, so the kid is home, his other, say, Monday, Tuesday, because that's when he doesn't go to school. The teacher is Zooming, and I guess they Zoom in, and they watch the teacher do the lesson?
So can, Lori, could you give just a sample of what Ms. Hobbs is doing? You and I just looked at her Google Classroom.
Right.
And maybe you, maybe we don't share it on publicly, but you could maybe look at that Google Classroom and talk about the structure for those kids that aren't there.
Oh, yeah. So you're using Google Classroom?
Right, so K to two is using CSO.
Right.
And grades three through eight are using Google Classroom. So Ally, for example, today with the kids that are home, she went on and created a video for them in Google Classroom, and she talks them through their agenda for the day, including the times they needed to zoom in and check in with Mrs. Phillips.
With the agenda right there. So it's like her and the green screen type technology. She's super good at it, super organized.
So they knew they needed to check in for morning meeting, and then there were three other times during the day that they were supposed to check in. And then when they weren't checking in, she went into which assignments on Google Classroom they should be working on. So they had their whole day laid out.
No, but I'm saying, they, so the kid at home sees the teacher as she's teaching the class.
Some, middle school is doing that. Middle school is doing synchronous learning. They log into their app every day at the beginning. K to two and three to five are not necessarily doing real-time learning.
Oh, okay.
Right now. What they did was, because we had two days with blue and two days with white, they wanted to get everybody into Google Classroom, used to the technology they were using, and they set up some routines and things for them to do at home. But they all had a schedule. They all had times they needed to check in online with the ed tech or the teacher in the classroom. So that they had an opportunity to ask questions or get a little help or get a little mini lesson if they needed it.
So when they check in, when you say when they check in, are they doing a video?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep, they're zooming in. There's a Zoom link there that's on the same Zoom link every time.
Yeah.
And they just click on that, and then Mrs. Phillips, her fourth grade, is there, and all the kids are zooming in with her.
So she might have, like, six or eight kids.
Right, while the teachers are teaching, everybody else that's in the classroom.
That's another great thing, I think, is we utilize ed tech in such a manner where they partner up with teachers and it's a really good team effort in teaching and learning remote and in person at the same time.
Yeah, so trying to figure out how it looks.
Yeah, and Ms. Mittens' class this morning was the first day for the white scheduled kids. So there they all are, the blue scheduled kids that already met Ms. Mittens and been there for two days. I walked in, and there they all were on her screen. So the kids that were here yesterday are there, and you can tell they're in their kitchen and their living room. And then there's all these kids, and they're interacting with each other. So she had set up with her morning meeting that everybody was in her classroom, just somewhat physically there. So there's a blend of a lot of cool things. Okay, so distance learning and FERPA, that kind of gave us a little bit of a conversation about what's going on with reopening, too. We are moving into then A four NWEAs. I thought I'd let Lori bring you up to speed on how we're gonna do the baseline data for this fall, this year in remote.
Yep, so we have, of course, all the kids that are in school. It's gonna take us a little bit longer, because they're only here a couple of days a week. So over the next two weeks, starting on Monday, we've got the in-class kids all scheduled and ready to go. So that takes care of all the hybrid kids. The only kids we won't be able to assess that way is the kids that are totally remote. So we're in touch with them now to figure out whether or not they're comfortable bringing their kids to school, if we're allowed, if we're able to keep them in a separate location, and can we assess them here. And so Amanda's got responses from several right now that said yes, as long as they're kept away from other kids. And Patty and I actually can free up our schedules to proper and just give the test while they're here. So we're gonna schedule them up through probably the end of the month it might take us. And if anything, we can test them in reading and math. We might not get to science and language the test, but.
But to get something.
But the reading and the math are the most important, because we want to look at the Title I population and who did Rachel and Sherry, you know? Do they need to support some of those kids that are totally remote and work them into their schedule, and the same with Patty. So we're working on getting those 15, 16 kids here at school. And if we don't, we don't. We could attempt, depending on their age, to do it remotely. We'll just have to see how that goes.
I think one of the themes you'll see just from our first school committee of the year, you know, with kids in the building, is we've only, and we're already in our third day, and we're already now just starting to do the things that we would normally do. We just need to do them different. So school goes on. We're still doing what we always do. But we need to look at NWA a little different, because some of our kids don't come to the building, and we'll figure out how to make that work.
Excellent.
I have two more before we get to policy committee. That's eight, five. I'll take CR funds, and eight, six, I'll give to Andy. I'll start with eight, five, CR funds. This is just an update. This is a little bit of a point of frustration for anybody who was in public education during the era funds, ARA funds. ARA funds came out after the crash of 2008.
Yes.
So the feds released the quantitative easing, and a lot of money went into the economy, and a lot of money went to schools and public entities. One of the issues I'm seeing all over again, what does a Yogi Bear says, say, deja vu all over again, is you get the money, you get the go-ahead, and let's spend it, let's get it done, and then they give you the rules after. So I'm gonna tell the board right now that I've asked Kim to pump the brakes on a few things, because we're learning some stuff. We have, I'm gonna just use the line of credit, because it really isn't. We can be reimbursed up to $188,000 and some change for items we need that are not in the, that are not in the regular FY21 budget and are needed because COVID came along. If we can kind of pass that muster on those two tests, it sounds like we can draw down on some funds. We're gonna pay for it, but they'll reimburse us. Well, now, Kim's going to, like, weekly meetings, and I've reached out to the state director of this to make sure I have a very good relationship, whether he's a former superintendent of mine, to find out that we're hearing interesting things, like, well, the money goes away on December 31st. Well, we knew that, and I informed you of that. So spend it before then and allocate it, and by the end of September, have a very detailed budget of how you want to spend it. Okay, no problem. But now we're getting information like, well, if you have a subscription that's 12 months out of the year, we're only gonna pay for it up to the 31st. It's on you to take care of the other six months. And I'm like, huh? Like, a subscription is Zoom, for instance. So, you know, I'll work through it, and I'll get back to you, but Zoom's about $5,000. Well, we've already got it, because we knew we needed it. It wasn't in the budget, and it's COVID-related. Last thing I need to hear is you're only gonna pay for it up to New Year's Day, and I can get stuck with the rest. So it's not just us. You're gonna hear about this throughout. But that's just an example of, wait a minute, that's not what we thought the rules were gonna be. So I'm very cautious now about spending money. I think I'm gonna get reimbursed. I want it in writing I'm gonna get reimbursed, before I say to Kim, "Pull the trigger on that. That payable, because I need it in writing so that I get it back." And like I said, the relationship is solid, so I just want to make sure that I get very clear communication, because poor Kim, every time she goes to one of these meetings, she comes in, and she's like, "My aunt's tied me to water." So I'm like, "All right, so check into it." So that's kind of what, I just wanted to just update you. It's not a penny, penny. The sky's not falling. You know, we'll be okay, but we're gonna be very diligent and make sure we know what we're talking about, because it seems like the goalposts are getting moved in that, too. And I don't want to get caught short and say to you guys, "Wow, we bought this. You thought we were gonna be reimbursed," and guess what? So we learned today, things are changing, so I'm telling you tonight, we're gonna be more diligent to make sure we get it pre-approved. It doesn't surprise some of you, I'm sure. You've seen this before. I've seen it before, so I'm glad the money's there, though. So it's good. We've got some things already in place that I know are 100% reimbursable, but we just need to ask the second question when we work with these funds, to make sure that we're doing it right. Next, second to last, is sanitization and cleaning. And Andy gave you a tour of the building and the grounds. I think the place looks great. I think you think the place looks great, from what I can tell from what you had to say. But I'm gonna turn it over to Andy so that there's a public opportunity for everybody to hear what we do in this building to keep their kids and staff safe.
Okay, so a lot of the stuff that we've been implementing as far as our cleaning and sanitizing has been pretty much taken from CDC, and it's been a challenge, because right from the get-go, once COVID got out there and people started seeing the need for cleaning and disinfecting, the products and availability of stuff instantly became an issue. So I started working back in, like, March and April, once this stuff hit, looking for products that would be effective, looking for products that would be available, and working with vendors that could supply us. And as I informed you then, we were pretty well stocked at that time. But meeting with vendors and talking with different people, we had to come up with a plan that we could, we could put products in school that were effective, and that we could also use products that were low health risk. Because upping our game means that we're dispersing chemicals and disinfectants and cleaners in the building while school's in session. And as part of really upping our game as far as frequency builds with sanitizing shared spaces and shared objects, we had to have the staff on board with actually participating in some of the cleaning and disinfecting process. So we basically narrowed it down to like three, three products that we're using. One is vital oxide. It's a very effective product for sanitizing. There's two different things that you try and accomplish. One is cleaning, one is sanitizing. The most important thing while school is in session is sanitizing. When kids in the junior high, for example, change from classroom to classroom, when there's a turnover in students and students enter a space where another student's been, before they go there, that area, those eye contact areas are sanitized. So we really had to take a hard look at procedures, what we were going to do, effective products, and availability of products. So it's been, it's been a challenge, but we've got a good, we've got a good process in place. So it's been, it's been a challenge, but we've got a good, we've got a good process in place. The other thing that we did was we've added hand sanitizing stations throughout the building. And again, the disinfect, the sanitizing product that we use, the hand sanitizer, all is dictated by the CDC. You have to have a product that falls in line with what they recommend. And we put them in, you know, throughout the building. And then I also relied heavily on staff feedback, once, you know, once the staff started trickling back in. We tried to, we tried to hit as many common areas as we thought we could. And then once, once the staff came back, they said, boy, you know, one here would be great, an additional one here might be nice. So we, we have, we have plenty of dispensers on hand and plenty of product. The other thing that I had mentioned in my report too was the PTG donated the water drinking fountain that you saw in the main lobby. You know, we had to work through CDC guidelines all summer long, you know, planning for this reopening. You know, any, any spots where people can all come together and, you know, congregate and use common items is, we are so far away from doing that. That's why all of the drinking fountains had to be shut down. And the PTGs, you know, stepped up because these water bottle refill stations actually became one of those items that was almost next to impossible to get because schools that didn't have them were buying them like hotcakes. So I had one on order that was backordered and at the same time, the PTG already had one on the way. So they kind of rescued us, which was really awesome. And Lindsay Crawford, who is our teacher representative for the PTG, informed us yesterday that they have another one coming. So as those arrive, we'll be, we'll also be adding those. But yeah, it's been a challenge this summer and, you know, I've relied heavily on, you know, our administrative team too during the planning process. As I mentioned to the committee during the tour, I've had a lot of conversations with Carol Wendell over the course of the summer and, you know, leading up to this, and Carol has just been incredible. She is just, she is a wealth of knowledge on things that I have no idea of. So I can always go to Carol and if Carol doesn't know it off the top of her head, I mean, she will, she'll roll her sleeves up and she'll, she'll do the work and get us answers. So yeah, it's, it's been a challenge, but you know, the payoff is, and it's happened this week when the kids have returned. So it's gonna be a work in progress. And like John mentioned, even planning over the summer was difficult because the rules changed so often. You'd start off in a direction and the rules would change and it's like, nope, you can't do that. Or, you know, something that you're working on and something's not even materialized and you just, you can't do it, you know, so. We had cleaning processes in place that I was so gung-ho and so proud that we already had in place and then some of the rules changed and those procedures were no longer, you know, wouldn't meet the CDC requirements, so we had to toss them and then start from scratch. So, you know, eventually those practices and stuff will come back, but for now, I'm more than confident that what we're doing, it meets all the CDC requirements and, and I thank the staff for, you know, stepping up to the plate too to help us supplement our, our program as far as sanitizing because it's, you know, all the things that we preach to our kids as far as, you know, keeping it, you know, washing your hands, sanitizing your hands, the distancing, all of it. And, you know, it's been, everybody's been on board and, and put 110% into getting the kids back in the building, so. That's about it.
Excellent.
Just, you know, the team that got the custodial staff has been awesome too. We had no idea what it was gonna look like, you know, coming back in. I thought we might have to shift some of the staff around because of the increase in the frequency of cleaning. And I was really like nervous and like a little bit apprehensive like what this would actually look like. But now that I've been able to see it for the first three days of school, it's very manageable because of the volume of students and it's also very manageable because, like I said, the staff is supplementing what we're doing. So I'm, I'm pretty, pretty happy died.
Good.
Place looks awesome.
Yes, thank you very much. And, you know, thank you for putting the resources in place that we need to keep the school looking as good as it does. So I can't do it without the support of the committee and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy's comment, that's so true, is we'll start with this plan and two weeks into it, we'll end up changing it, it'll be something different. And we'll learn as we go, and that's so true. We learn as we go, it's not what we thought it would be, we'll try this. Okay, just to wrap, any questions for Andy? Yeah?
Yep, just the one, when we did our tour, we noticed all the fans sucking the air outside.
Right.
So what about winter time?
Right, so the ventilation in the building, it's, it's laid out pretty specifically in the CDC guidelines. The window fans, basically what you need in a building, in every school building. You have air exchange in the building. As you breathe, you, you exhale carbon dioxide. And if you had just a closed room with no ventilation and no air exchange, your carbon dioxide levels would actually raise to a point where it would be unhealthy. So the air in the building, it's constantly bringing in fresh air and exhausting the stale air. When the CDC started developing their guidelines, what they wanted to do is they wanted to make sure that all of that stale air was being exhausted. So even if you had a building that the engineering was more than adequate for that exchange to take place, one of their recommendations in their guidelines were to install, you know, take a window fan to enhance the ability to get that stale air out. You know, at first, you know, when we were talking about the fans, they're like, well, cool, we're gonna open our fans and get the fresh air in here. But the, the whole theory behind it is to get the used air out. But at the same time, the fresh air is coming in through the, through the system that's already in the building. So when we, when we did this and we committed to ordering all these window fans to each and every learning area, we had to like look ahead. It's like, well, what's that gonna look like in December? We're paying a heating bill and we're gonna have all the windows open, blowing all the warm air out the windows. Well, when, when the colder months hit, we won't be utilizing the fans because the system that we have in place is adequate to turn over that air. One of the other things that we did and it was proactive on our part was, I had our contractor come in that services those systems come in over the summer and inspect every single unit. We replace the filters three times a year. John just got some information, we're gonna be updating our filters that we currently use. We're gonna go, the filters that we currently use meet all the CDC guidelines, but, you know, with everything, you know, technology changes. They're introducing better filters to the market and our system, our custom filters, so we can, we can do that. So that'll be an update that also happens within the school year. But the biggest thing is getting the stale air out and getting fresh air in.
Unlike wearing a mask all the time.
You know, so I intended, that was kind of long-winded, but I have spent so much time this summer reading, reading up on this stuff. I've watched more exciting YouTube videos on disinfecting and cleaning and looking at promotional videos of the greatest disinfectants and what will kill COVID-19 and what
Oh, yeah, it can, it can.
But, you know, it's all stuff that has to be in place to meet the, to meet the guidelines and, yeah. I've sent a lot of Amazon orders to Kim to approve, to get stuff here and, I mean, it's just been
Crazy.
Been crazy, but, so that's, that's
Andy's germ and airport report.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy.
No, he's gonna do a good job, he actually explained it really well.
Yeah. I had to have it explained to me by other people quite a few times before I got the full grasp of it.
Do either one of you wanna mention the outdoor learning spaces?
You wanna take care of that? That's tomorrow, we owe
Well, if you guys have another hour, I When we started looking at the reopening plan, John actually spearheaded the purchase of two 20 by 40 tents because our summer school, which was kind of a, as John mentioned before, it's kind of a boot camp as to what school looked like. We actually purchased six new picnic tables so that the kids could, could learn outdoors. And we noticed right off the bat that, you know, the teachers got the kids outside as much as, as much as they could as weather permitted. So John kind of, kind of took the reins on purchasing two tents for out back, for outdoor learning spaces. And we have found this across the board that our ideas, even though they're good, they're the same ideas that many schools in Maine have. So, you know, getting the tents here, you know, they're gonna be, they're gonna be put up tomorrow. But there's been some hoops to jump through to get that to happen too. But once the tents are up, there'll be two spaces, there'll be actually 12 picnic tables for, you know, however we socially distance the kids. They'll be installed and where our hopes are, to keep them up and available for staff and kids until hopefully November. So, and I, you know, thank Rick Smith, the latter chief, he's been incredible as, as far as providing information because as these tents have shown up all over the state with different schools, the life safety codes have changed and Rick has really been right on top of that. And we had been corresponding by email and he actually just walked into the garage one day and we talked for like a half an hour, 45 minutes as far as what the regulations look like and, you know, what, what the changes are. And he said that once the tents are up, that he'll be here like ASAP to inspect them. And I've been in touch with acting code enforcement too as far as getting them inspected and getting them ready for use, so. But thank you, Mr. Ross, because you kind of took that and made it happen.
How it goes.
I think it's gonna be a good experience for the kids and it's another option, so.
So teachers are gonna have to request time in these tents?
Yeah, we'll schedule it. Yeah, we're gonna, then we'll lead, let each cohort figure out how they wanna do that. Because I'm sure once they're up and inspected, people wanna use it.
Well, that's great.
Talk about November and winter might be coming. I don't remember about the price of oil. Was that already booked?
We're locked in.
We're locked in, so what is it? Do you know, I mean, do you remember what it was? Because I see trucks riding around now at a dollar fifty-five a gallon.
On the market right now, it's, it's pretty cheap right now, but I think, and I'm gonna throw a number out even though I shouldn't, but I don't know for sure.
It's all right, I mean, I don't remember what
It's operating one sign
Something like that.
How much?
It's already
I would
Well, after this last hurricane
We'll just shoot an email out to you guys with the number and they'll have it.
That's all right.
We'll shoot an email, Kim, get it, Andy, get that to you.
He sent it to us before.
Yeah, but after this hurricane, they've cut down some of the
Right, good point, the refineries.
The drilling and all this and that, and like I said, it's a dollar fifty-five, one oil truck I saw go by and that's quite a drastic increase.
Maybe we can pick the windows up in all winter.
Huh? There you go!
There's the answer.
The good thing is about our oil, our oil purchases, it's through the Stanford
Oh, I know, oh, I understand that, yeah, but, I mean, it's just
Once the contract is up, we're always automatically included in that purchase and
That helps us a lot.
Okay, thank you.
All right, amen.
Anybody, any more questions or
No.
Comments? No? And let's look at policy committee dates to meet.
We put that on there with, you know, Kim and I meet with the policy committee. We might wanna, do you wanna work with Kim on dates now? I've got my calendar and we can just say, you know, every, which day at which time each month and then we'll fill in the calendar and get it to you.
I forgot what day we did.
I think it was the day of the school committee meeting in the morning.
It was Thursday, it was the morning.
Didn't we do it that way?
Was it that?
I'd like to do it that way again, right.
Eight forty-five?
It was eight forty-five because I needed a little extra time before I could join you. I always found I was late, so we moved
Oh, we can do it nine o'clock, I mean, you know
Whatever works for you and there's four of us, we can probably meet right in Kim's office. If not, we can use my office, there's enough room for us working there if there's just four of us. You pick, we're, we're here, it's whatever works with your calendar. If you wanna do it Monday through Friday, you pick a time when we're open and we're here.
Same day as the school committee meeting, like, I mean, we did that last time and it worked out okay. And instead of eight forty-five, since you have something, something to do a lot of the times in the morning.
Well, let's go on eight forty-five and if I get, if I get jammed up in something, Kim knows and I, I often float in when I can, but, but most of the time, eight forty-five, I can be there at the beginning.
You wanna do that for October?
So we would do it on the October meeting date, which would be a month, approximately a month from now.
Which, which October do you
This October.
October eighth.
What are you talking about? Oh, this is September, so our next meeting is October with the school committee, so I assumed we'd get together with policy, right, the second Thursday of, of that month.
So basically you would just take these dates that are down here for our meetings, correct? And just put those down as policy.
That would be the eighth, the eighth of October.
If we do that though, Kim, you won't be able to approve any policies next meeting because we will have met that morning. If you're okay with that.
We haven't in so long, I mean, what's
Does it make a difference? And if I needed any emergency stuff to be put through for COVID, I would probably do a special session with you.
Right, and there's probably thirty thousand new ones anyway, so
There's gotta be, I was waiting for them tonight, I'm like, no, they're gonna throw us the policy.
I hate to see a biter.
Oh, I know, it's that sick.
Well, you know, a lot of what we're doing is guidelines from the state and the CDC don't require policies because they're probably gonna be temporary. They're processes, remember, processes and policy are two different things. We're all being a certain way right now because of administrative process. We have to be this way. But if we put masks in policy, later we have to take masks out of policy. So there's a lot that isn't in policy right now because we're looking at this is emerging and changing. Okay, and we do, when you asked about any changes, it does always show executive session. I should have mentioned that, pardon me, that we have no need to meet on number 10.
Right, that's all right.
It's fine.
No old business.
No old business?
No.
All right.
Everything done.
Anybody have anything else they wanna say or share of what we need?
Oh, I just wanna know, I know, because it's gonna be right around the corner. We can still do like trunk or treat, correct?
We can't gather more than a hundred people outside right now.
We've had a hundred?
So let me help you with the, the governor extended her executive order for a civil emergency through October 3rd. So we're still not supposed to gather more than 50 in one place inside. We're, we're okay with schools this size because I can't put more than 50 people in the gym and have a meeting. So in our cohort meetings, we were just under that, we were like 30 kids and five staff. We were well under the 50. Our staff is under 50, we can get away with it. It's gonna be tricky, I'll just do you a side note, at a big high school where you meet with all the freshmen, to have your one freshman meeting in the auditorium, if there's more than 50 of them, you're not doing it. You're doing that as many times as you need to until you meet with all of them. So it's gonna be taxing on larger student bodies than we have. And it's a hundred outside right now. So even if we kept it outside, our trunk or treat draws like probably three or four hundred people. That's one of the biggest events. So I'm gonna say unless if the executive order changes on October 3rd, I would say if nothing changes, we're not doing trunk or treat. Now, PTG meets on Monday, it might come up. If it changes and we don't have these caps on gathering, we then need to pause and ask the question, how do you have it with physical distancing and masks and all the other things that aren't going away? And maybe it's doable, I think you just plan for it.
Well, I'm just saying, you could do a pre-K through two session. You know, I know some people might have a fifth grader with a second grader, but, you know.
Kind of different drive-in times?
Yeah.
Like we did with the parade, like we did with deployment. I'm gonna pray that's with the BTG Mary when we meet. Okay, that's, that's actually creative thinking.
Just to keep something normal for the kids.
Well, I know, I so much want to. So we'll look at that because it's just, it's comments like Mary made that really change things. Because when we got together over the six days of PD, we didn't even know what the questions were. Then a question would come up and somebody would say, what about this? And we're like, what a great idea! And that's how we got organized and was able to open schools. So I'll definitely bring that forward if we can do like a time zone thing on a Saturday, maybe starting a little earlier. See what that looks like, see if they're up for it. Because we really, it's a PTG thing.
Yeah.
But we participate very strongly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, the kids gotta have something.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Something normal.
That's right.
They can't have their Friday assemblies, they can't, you know, different things, they can't get it.
But they are here, but they're in the building. They're in the building.
So that's good.
That's something they couldn't have liked here, so, yeah. I think with their friend.
My daughter has been with her two boys all summer, you know, since March or whatever, all summer. And she thought they were gonna be so upset when they left her today and they ran out of the car and forgot to say bye.
That's, that's good.
What? She was like, what happened? You know, she thought they'd be like, Mom, I don't wanna leave you. They were like, see ya! They were so happy to get in here.
Yep.
One of my friends, her, her little boy just started kindergarten and she was like, oh, you know, it's her oldest and she knew she was gonna be crying, so she took him, she went to meet the teacher with him and the teacher said to him, what do you like to do?
And he said, I like to dance. He said, I'll probably be, I'll probably be dancing all of my life. And he was just as happy as a clam and so it packed her up, so she said, there were no tears.
No tears.
I love to dance. Okay, then, if there's nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, I don't know what clock is correct.
Use that one, I just realized, yeah.
Six nineteen.
It's running like the world, I know, but it's running like the world is right now.
Somebody second that motion?
I'll second it.
Linda? All those in favor? Five and O.
After everybody. Thank everybody for being here tonight.
I'm looking directly at two...